Moving on communications tonight, we have presentation of the proposed 2020 budget by Mayor Eric Papathoussis. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. We have a lot of exciting and positive news tonight, and I'm honored to be able to present a balanced 2020 budget to you all this evening. The agenda we're going to follow is the same agenda that we've used in past years. We'll talk about balancing the budget. We will go over some revenue and expenditure highlights. We'll talk about how we're maintaining critical capacity here at the city, some debt management initiatives that we have, update on capital improvement projects, and we'll end with next steps and the future plan budget hearings. So, the first slide, as in past years, takes a moment to really absorb. What we've done here is we have compared three things, the 2019 budget operating in capital and the 2020 budget that we're proposing operating in capital. We've also included a comparison to the five-year plan that we put together earlier this year. The first thing that you'll notice is that if you compare the revenue line for the 2019 budget to the 2020 budget for the five-year plan, it's a differential of about $1 million. And when we put that together, that was in part because, and you'll see this in detail in a minute, we were expecting about a $1 million drop-off in parking revenues as a part of how the parking deal was structured. That was to be expected. It was front-loaded in the sense that we received higher payments in the first five years of the parking transaction and then lower payments. But I'm pleased to say that we are projecting for the 2020 budget, under operating, a budget of $64,959,105 in revenue, which is larger than even the 2019 budget and incorporating the $1 million loss from parking. And we are significantly, we're about $1 million in increased revenue since we put together the five-year plan back in the spring. And I will go into some detail about why that is, but the news is very promising for the city. We will also talk in some detail about a proposed additional payment to Ambac, our bond insurer, of $5 million, which we are proposing for this year and the term sheet for which is on your agenda tonight. And we'll talk about some, if you recall when we did the capital plan back at the beginning of the year, we had about $3,145,000 in certain projects that we budgeted. And then we had a list of priority projects that we would have liked to fund, but we wanted to make sure that we could fund responsibly. And we've got about another $1 million worth of projects that we think we're in a position where we should fund them for the good of the city, and we'll talk about those as we move along. So this is the seventh consecutive year that we've had no tax increases and a balanced budget. And we are absolutely showing a trend of moderate, yet steady economic growth across all sectors. Before we switch to the next slide, though, I did want to note one thing in case it stands out to you. For the five-year plan on the expenditure side, you'll note that we had originally budgeted $62 million. That is because the $2 million payment to Ambac, which we'll discuss in a minute, was optional. At the time we put the plan together, we are proposing making it not optional and adjusting the agreement we have with Ambac. And in addition to making the $2 million draw year not optional, we're suggesting paying an additional $5 million. Okay. So let's drill down on the revenue highlights. And for the revenue highlights, there are many. The first thing you'll note if you go to the bottom is that that's where the priority parking decrease is there. It was not unexpected. As I say, it's about $1.2 million, and that will continue moving forward at the rate that we're seeing for 2020 and beyond, but not at the elevated rate that we had up until 2019. But aside from the parking payment, every other item is up. It's up both in terms of what we had in the 2019 budget, and some of them are up, in fact, in terms of what we had for the 2020 budget when we put it together. So notably, earned income tax is increasing at a fairly stable clip. It was up over projections earlier in the year, and we've revised that even upwards beyond what we had in the five-year plan. And we're seeing strong growth in the mercantile business tax sector where we've got an estimated about $500,000 more in revenue than we budgeted for earlier in the year. That plus stronger realty transfer taxes basically means there are more people working in the city, they're earning more money, businesses are doing more commerce, and more people are buying and selling property. And really uniformly, all of that is very good news. We're seeing, going to see an increase in pilots for next year. I'll get to that in a minute. You'll note that in the LST alone, you're looking at several thousand new jobs created since the budget in 2019, since we were here about a year ago. And I'll also just mention that pension aid continues to increase, which is a good sign, and that's something which comes from the Commonwealth. So we're showing budgeted revenues across the category steadily higher year over year, and it is a very positive revenue outlook. On the expenditure side, you will note that if you start with personnel, the budget for personnel is about $1 million more than what we budgeted in 2019. And that's largely because we are proposing giving the police a $1 million increase in their personnel budget. And that's part of the new collective bargaining contract that they voted affirmatively for, that we'll talk about as we move forward, that's going to help us with wages and retention and recruitment issues. But that really explains the increase, and it explains the increase based on the five-year plan, which did not calculate a new contract at that time. We're showing some stabilization in terms of pension expenses and healthcare, and we are also budgeting a lot more in debt payment, that additional $5 million, which we'll go into some detail on. Going to Ambac accounts for the extra $5 million in debt service. All right, let's take a moment and unpack this chart and talk a little bit about the new police contract. Now, council's going to have an opportunity to talk to the lawyers involved and really drill down into all the aspects of the police contract. But from the public standpoint, I wanted to make some highlights. And the main thing we're doing is we're doing a, pretty much a complete makeover of how police officers are paid. And we are embedding a sense of longevity into a contract, which originally had a bifurcated system in which if you'd been here for a long time, you got longevity, which basically meant there was an added bonus for how long you were here. And if you were hired post-receivership, you didn't have that. So there wasn't as much of an opportunity or reward for being here longer. So if you look at the column on the left, this is for patrol officers. After you get through the training phase and the probationary phase, under the old contract, you would get up to about $64,500, and that would be it. You were done. It didn't matter how long you were here for. If you were a patrol officer under the old contract, you would cap out at that number. We've changed that, and we've changed it considerably and at great cost to the city by basically getting the patrol officer salary up to $70,000 after five years of completed service to the city. So five years from your hire date, you're up to $70,000. And then if you've been here for 20 or even 30 years, in some cases, you can make upwards of almost as much as $80,000. So there is a sense of progression the longer you're here. But there's also this bump, this fairly large bump right at the beginning, which we believe will help us both recruit new officers and retain them as they're here. As I say, this salary scale is similar. It works for all ranks, not just patrol, but the majority of our officers are in patrol, so I showed you that one there. But it's also elevated for all ranks. On the, there are a couple other highlights, not on the slide, but things that I want to mention. There were some older officers under the old contract that were eligible to retire with an added benefit that would have expired when that contract expired. We extended that benefit. It was a pension bump benefit, which basically does not put any pressure on them to retire due to the contract. They can retire when they wish. And that should also help us not see some of the older officers retiring and depleting our ranks. It should be noted that this is a six-year contact proposal, which is long, because it's not only a five-year new contract, but it also is replacing the contract that would have been in existence for 2020. That contract, had we done nothing, would have only provided a 1% raise and no bonus and not really changed the dynamic at all. And given that we haven't been able to get up to a critical capacity in police, we felt we wanted to open that contract a whole year early and hopefully bring our numbers up. In addition to that pension bump, some other highlights for the contract. We will be adding additional supervisors. We're going to be adding some capacity in upper ranks, which means there'll be more opportunity for upward mobility. We're also going to civilianize some positions. I will show you that on the next slide. And we're going to offer increased pay for specialty units. So right now, if you're a specialty unit, let's say you're an FTO or a member of the traffic safety unit or some specialty unit, you don't see any additional compensation for that, and we're going to work that into the contract. And we're also going to return Martin Luther King Day as a holiday for police. That was something that was removed under receivership that we wanted to bring back. So in a nutshell, that's what the contract is doing, and we will go into greater discussion about it. But it does account for, in year one, $1 million more in personnel costs for police. The next slide talks about some of the new positions for police. And I am excited to say tonight that the school district is very interested in reviving the school resource officer program that once existed in the school district. It's something that we've been interested in reviving in the past, but now they want to do it. They are offering to split the cost of school resource officers 50/50 with the city. So for everyone we hire, they'll pay for one as well. And we are proposing starting with two officers next year and then building the program as we're able to build capacity over time. We also want to take two positions that are currently, and this was negotiated as a part of the contract, two positions that are currently done by uniformed officers and civilianize them, basically make them management positions so that we can return those officers basically to patrol and other tasks. So those two that were identified are, there's a court liaison, and there's an accreditation officer, and both of those can safely be civilianized without, and actually allow us to have more officers doing other things. We're going to add a captain. So that's an organizational change. There's some lieutenants and others that are collectively bargained, but the captain is management, is part of the command staff. And that's going to allow us to have two captains, one now for CID and one for uniform patrol, whereas historically, we've just had one captain. And the last several captains have been out of CID, and this should help from both a management standpoint and also an upward mobility standpoint for the department. Our total complement is increasing. We have the ability to budget for 153 uniformed officers. We haven't been able to get out of the high 130, so we are well below that number. But we are hopeful with the new salaries and the longer-term stability, the stability of a longer-term contract and some of these other changes that we're going to finally be able to build those numbers back. And then I'll be talking to you in future years about increasing that number beyond 153. But that's not all. It's not just exciting news for police. It is also exciting news for fire, and we're very pleased with the management of fire. And we are proposing adding four new firefighters for the 2020 budget. And we believe that we can pay for those. In fact, we'll exceed the cost of those firefighters in year one through a reduction in the fire overtime budget, which is even a further reduction over where it was. If you remember years ago when we first started here, the fire overtime budget was through the roof. We've slowly built back the ranks, but we can lower it even more. And that will give us greater capacity as well, and it will serve the citizens well. So we have a means of paying for it, and we are proposing four new additional firefighters. That will bring up the bargaining unit complement from '82 to '86, plus their command staff. Other than those changes in police and fire, there are very few personnel changes in the budget. There's not a lot. It's not like last year where we were proposing a whole series of new positions. We're proposing a couple, and I'll start at the top here. We, if you recall, last year, we created our first project manager position. We put that person in traffic and engineering, and that person has worked out incredibly well for the city. We'll talk about one of the projects that he managed extremely well in a minute. But it has resulted in a savings and in a greater quality of completion of some of the things for traffic safety. We'd like to do another project manager in the budget for next year, specifically with regard to our parks. And this is somebody who will be able to oversee implementation of the Reservoir Park master plan in all of its phases, work with the Civil War Museum, which is continuing to fundraise to try and purchase the artifacts and establish a fund that will help fund the Reservoir Park master plan. And I'm pleased to say that we just received, just within the last couple days, a $250,000 grant from DCNR towards the Chutes and Ladders playground. That was something we were hoping for and even expecting, and that application had come before council. But it is official now, which doesn't mean that we have raised all that we need for the playground, but does mean that it is one step further towards its actual implementation, and that's something that will fall under this project manager. Also, we think a project manager could help work with the many volunteers in the community, coordinating their efforts for cleanups and whatnot, as well as assist our current grants director with finding additional opportunities for funding. Other than that, the other positions are pretty self-explanatory. For our events, we are proposing having a part-time special events coordinator that would report to the special events director and would basically be available only for our events. We've added Arts Fest, as you know, this past year. We think logistically it would be helpful to have one more person available. This is a relatively small amount of money in a small position, but it's an important one because it would give greater capacity. By having a special events logistics coordinator, you'd also cut down a bit on some of the overtime, which is now required of our other managers at the city, and allow the events to, you know, basically run themselves. And so that's in the budget. There's one change to the public works. We are taking currently an administrative assistant in public works and moving that person to management, creating what is essentially a special assistant position to the director in public works. That is essentially the task which that person is performing, but now it'll be formalized, and it matches what we have. We have a special assistant assisting the police commissioner, a special assistant assisting the mayor, that sort of thing, that sort of role. And then this is not a second position, but the old position that she was in would simply be reclassified as a customer service rep. So the union would not lose the position, but the management would gain a special assistant. And then finally, we're proposing one more solid waste enforcement coordinator, which means basically somebody to work with our current coordinator in citing and going to court and implementing our new enforcement program for sanitation. I can report tonight that Howard Drayton, who's been our officer and has started issuing citations since April of this year, has already issued 65 citations for up to $22,000 in fines. He's got 30 more pending, and he's got a lot of ideas and energies for how he can expand the program. And we'd like to have a second person in it so that we can do even more. So those are the only changes from a non-public safety side of things. I cited a few other highlights of the maintaining critical capacity when we went over the pilots. I am pleased to announce tonight as well that we have negotiated with UPMC Pinnacle to increase their annual pilot contribution to the city by $150,000. When I took office, they upped it at the time from what it was and agreed to a five-year pilot agreement extension. That has now expired, and they're willing to up it again by another $150,000 moving forward. That's a sign that their business is doing well. They're the largest private employer in the city, and we are pleased to have that additional revenue coming in. We've also had our, we had a grant agreement with the visitors bureau that was proceeds from the hotel tax that was used to fund our special events director and another position here at the city. And that had been for, I believe, three years. That has expired, and they've decided to renew that, as well as to increase the amount of support that goes directly to the city. They also provide additional support on the marketing side, but this is the direct appropriation that goes to the city to help underwrite salaries. And as those salaries have increased, they are also willing to increase their grant. And then finally, just again on the Harrisburg School District. Basically, we can't tell you the exact amount until we choose the actual officers who will become the school resource officers. But assuming that they are approximately five- or six-year veterans of the department, then they would be making each about $70,000 a year. So half of that cost would be $70,000 coming to the city to help pay for the SROs. Onto debt a little bit. Basically, as in past years, the city is anticipating paying off the full Ambac liability and not taking advantage of what was a provision that we could borrow up to $2 million a year against it if the city's finances required it. This is something that, as you know, we've done every year for the past several years. But the key this year is that we're planning to, we're planning to make that payment, or that, not have that draw be anything other than basically required in the agreement, so that it will no longer be available to us to take moving forward if we agree to the term sheet that's proposed with Ambac. So let's talk about that for a minute, because this is big deal, a very big deal for the city and is something that has taken a whole year-plus to negotiate. We have a proposal, it's also on the agenda, for a term sheet with Ambac, our debt insurer, to basically significantly pay down some of the debt. The easiest way to think about this from the public standpoint is this is the debt that the city didn't pay under receivership when it basically didn't have enough money to pay its general obligation bonds. Ambac, the insurer, stepped in and paid that debt. And then in receivership, it was negotiated that when the rest of the general obligation debt is paid off, the city would have to pay that back with interest for a 10-year period after 2022. That's what this money is. By prepaying it now, we're going to achieve a fairly significant benefit. Ambac is interested in getting that debt off its books, and as a result, it has offered the city a multiplier. It's a multiplier of 1.38 against payments up to $8 million, which are made towards the debt. We're budgeting $5 million to start, and that multiplier effect on $5 million means that basically they're saying, you give us five and we'll credit you for $6.9 million. That's a great benefit and a positive thing. They're also willing to, if we agree to those terms and we prepay the five, they're willing to reduce the interest rate for the next three years, which 2020, 2021, and 2022 are the last three years of the regular general obligation debt before we would start paying on this debt. So moving forward, they would reduce that interest rate down from 6.75% to 5%. Now, that payment plus the multiplier plus the interest rate savings all means that that overall liability, which we then have to start paying on after 2022, that is reduced by almost $9 million, and it goes from something around $28 million down to $19 million just by doing that alone. And that is, those are the terms of an agreement which are before you, and again, it makes that draw no longer possible. But the even bigger news is that I think the city is planning to test the waters of entering the financial markets in that we want to issue an RFP for an underwriter. And we will do this to see if we can actually then, on top of that, refinance the rest of the liability, take advantage of the additional multiplier effect, and remove Ambac from the picture altogether. Finding a banking partner that's willing to do this for the city would be a big step in restoring creditworthiness and is something that our financial advisor, who is Marathon Capital Advisors, thinks is actually doable, given where we are as a city and the progress that we've made. So the deal is good even without a refinance. The deal is even better with a refinance, and that could result in millions of dollars more in savings just by, say, refinancing that interest rate to a new term, down to 4.5%, as opposed to the 6.75% would be a big savings. So more on that, and I know council's going to have lots of questions on the police contract and the Ambac settlement term sheet, but this is just a brief bullet points for the public's benefit as well tonight. Finally, on debt management, last year, I think we had a very good agreement and an excellent policy that we are proposing we continue moving forward, which is that we had transferred basically the money that was allotted for positions that ended up not being filled on a regular basis from the general fund to the debt service fund to use for debt. We're proposing going ahead and doing that again for next year. Just as a point of interest, over the course of 2019, the city did fill 44 positions. So a lot of those positions that were open have been filled. And outside of police and fire, which are always in flux, there are currently, just so everyone knows, there are currently 19 positions open at the city. Seven are management, 12 are ask-me. Most of those are in various stages of interview process, and so some of them are likely to be filled soon. So I would say that whatever savings we would anticipate next year would be less than the savings we saw this year. But nonetheless, putting that aside for future debt service funding makes sense to us and can be part of our collective debt management initiatives. Okay, so now we're going to turn to capital for a little bit. And I know the font size on these graphs is a little small, but you have seen pretty much most of this before. The ones with the asterisks are the ones that are in the approved sort of five-year capital plan. That includes the D-CIT and D REV system replacement upgrades, which are very important to Treasury, by the way, and I'm sure you'll hear their advocacy for that moving forward, the Office 365 and the planned Giza. A couple things on the list which are carrying over from previous years, like the Fourth and Dauphin Playground, which is not quite finished but is in the final stages, and the voiceover IP phone system replacement. That is not finished, and that was coming from a gaming grant fund, but we have discussed that before, and there's been a lot of conversation about it. Other than that, the only real new proposals from a capital standpoint here have to do with security cameras, printers, and access controls. And so I would, aside from the printers, which are just, it's necessary now to do a printer fleet replacement for the city, the access controls and the cameras are about public safety and improving public safety, especially at city facilities like the Martin Luther King Building. And to break up the monotony of some of these slides, we've got some pretty exciting designs I want to share with you all tonight and the public, which has to do, again, with safety improvements and improved accessibility for the Martin Luther King Building. But, and this would be financed by city CDBG funds. We've talked about that, upgrading just the first floor of the building to improve access and accessibility to the bathrooms and the common space and public safety. But here are some renderings that are hot off the press from our architect about what the entryway to the first floor of City Hall could look like. And we, as I say, we have the CDBG funds available to do this, and we could move forward with this in the new year. So that, the first slide was the entryway. This is the second slide. If you go back one Bruce, the first slide shows you where the 301 operators would be positioned, and you're basically looking at it from the front doors. The second slide would be through that space onto the main floor. And what you're seeing there is a glass wall into council chambers. And quite excitingly, council chambers, which could be equipped with a sort of new orientation and new lighting and basically a new upgrade, would basically, I think, allow for increased public interaction and public participation in the legislative process. And those are some upgrades we would like to see. Then, switching from those illustrations back to the capital budget. If you look at public safety... If you look at public safety and the VMC, again, not very many changes. The ones in asterisks is the patrol vehicles for the police and the lease purchase for the fire. Those were in the five-year capital plan. There are a few things in there which are contingent on grant funding, but we've got them there. We'd like to get a new van for vice surveillance, a new van for patrol command, and we have ideas on where we can find funding for those, but that would be subject to the receipt of those grants. And then there's the vehicle leasing program that we entered into a few years ago, which basically has the fleet changing over on regular intervals. I wanted to segue from that into something which is pretty exciting, which is since we are doing leasing of our vehicles, on a yearly basis, we can start bringing into the city fleet itself some electric vehicles. And what you see there is a picture of the new angled parking on Third Street across from the State Museum that's just gone in. And then on the next slide, there is a picture of the, what the electric vehicle chargers are going to look like, where there's four dual-port charging stations for eight of those spaces. And that is what we are proposing, putting in also on City Island. And we have a grant proposal, and we're proposing using a little bit of money from the host fee to fund the implementation of those charging stations in the garage over at City Island. And then, once that is in place, we can begin switching over some of our fleet to electric. And this would be things like cars for codes inspectors or for some in building and housing that are doing outreach in the community, cars that don't need to travel outside of the city and are doing lots of sort of regular local transportation, and then can be charged overnight at these stations. So let's continue. Moving on to the Capital Projects Fund for Neighborhood Services, this is also not that different than what you've seen. In fact, there's, we've done such a good job of purchasing equipment for city services over the past few years that a lot of what you're seeing here is just the continuing lease payments of things that we've already purchased. The refuse trucks, the dump trucks, the front-end loaders, all those things, those payments continue on for a number of years. Tells you how many on the graph, and we're getting there. But in terms of new equipment, there's not a whole lot planned. There's some grant-funded potential for bulk collection trucks, and there's also, there's some grant money for the recycling program. There is the proposal of a, for a new small packer, and this is something which currently could be used in Steelton, and we can talk more about that at some point. You also have a new agreement with Steelton to consider moving forward. It has the outsourced demolition money that we have proposed and done in past years as well. No change there. And then parks maintenance, however, that's where we've added some things from the Priority One list that we didn't have when we did the original capital plan. There is some equipment there for parks maintenance that really needs to be replaced, a dump truck, a flatbed, and we also need to get the mowers into a sort of regular cycle. And part of this is being, is now able to be identified through the new focus and the new increase in the Parks Maintenance Division here at the city. As in past years, we have always reported to you, and we're going to do it again, what the City Public Works staff has done in terms of paving, right before we get to some of the larger transportation projects in the city. We have, last year, we gave you a list of alleys and locations where the city was planning to pave. Well, this is what they did manage to accomplish over the course of the year. It talks about when they did it, what the costs were, and those are just the basic costs for doing it. Everything from blocks on Logan Streets and 16th Street and Fifth Street, you name it. And then, if you flip to the next, you'll see the internal paving priorities. Now, these are, again, these are the things that the city's own forces will be doing to complement some of these larger paving and capital projects that you're seeing. That 15th Street project, by the way, is an exciting, affordable housing project that's going to be coming your way soon, and is going to be really transformative for that neighborhood in Allison Hill. And it requires us to do a little paving to be able to get our trash tucks into this newly designed neighborhood. But that's just a list of those priorities for you all to look at and mull over. And also in past years, we've done a sort of demolition status report where we've talked about what was demolished over the past year and what the priorities are for the next year. Public Works had a goal of 20. They actually completed 18, as well as, I think there were some garages and other things that the demo crew did. Those are the addresses, and if you go to the next slide, you'll see that, of course, the need, though, is vast. And the priority list are the ones that are identified currently as the most important priorities for 2020. And we may not be able to get to all of them, but we're going to focus on getting to as many of them as we can, and they are in order of priority that could change depending on circumstances, but is the priority list as of today. Okay, let's talk about some of the exciting, large capital projects for the city. Before we get into the ones that are proposed for 2020, last year at this time, we talked about four projects. We talked about the South Harrisburg paving project. We talked about the Riverwalk project. We talked about the Hur Street Accessibility Route Project and the McClay Street Project, and you funded all those in the capital plan. And so I thought we'd just share some pictures of the completion of those projects. The first one shows the area of the South Harrisburg paving project. I mentioned that this project was overseen by a project manager, Ambrose Buck, who has done really wonderful work for the city. The project came in on time, under budget. Basically, we had to add a few additional things, but was extremely, extremely well-managed. 112 new ADA ramps, making the whole corridor much more accessible, a lot of paving, many new inlets and tree removal. And those are some pictures. I hope everybody's had a chance to sort of see the impact of that. It stretches really all the way from South Harrisburg to Cameron Street up into Allison Hill, and has spent a lot of, a lot of time and energy over the past year. We also successfully completed the Riverwalk project, which is approximately two miles of new concreted walkway. Lots of tons of concrete, a lot of work in that project, I think, has really enhanced people's ability to enjoy the riverfront and our park. The Hur Street Accessibility Project was something we talked a lot about. We did complete that over the past year. We've got, again, more ADA ramps, new bus stops, new sidewalk. There's a picture, and it is, it has been a very positive improvement. And then there's McClay Street. Forty-six ADA ramps already completed. There's one intersection left. That is the intersection of Fourth and McClay. That will be done in the spring, but everything else is done. That has eight ramps in addition at Fourth and McClay, and that had to do with the repositioning of the signal there. That was always planned to be a sort of separate project that was a little more complicated, but the rest of McClay Street is done. So a lot of positive developments based on last year's capital plan. Then, if we look at this year's capital plan, you will, you will see some projects that we're going to talk about in a minute, including the East-West Connector, which is an interesting project which is going to affect Chestnut and Walnut Street. You see some projects that you've seen before, such as Vision Zero, all of which were in the five-year capital plan. And you see some projects you saw last year which are carrying over again to this year, including the Seventh Street construction. That was delayed in part as we worked through things with the federal courthouse and with FIA. And I'm pleased to report that FIA has stepped up and is prepared to spend over $200,000 to help close the gap on that project, and they're very excited about seeing that completed. They're also donating land around the roundabout, which is good for the city, and I'll show you a picture in a minute, but that's a positive thing. We'll talk about the East-West Connector. We'll talk about Mulder Square, and we'll update Vision Zero. So let's go to the next slide. These are basically the five main projects which are going on for next year. The North Seventh Street project is the thing which you should see beginning first. That will begin in May of 2020. Again, that just required that final sign-off from FIA, and I've got a slide to remind you about that project in a minute. Mulder Square should commence over the summer. That also is a carryover that had to be worked out with the Redevelopment Authority and some R cap funds and other aspects of the Mulder Square project, but that will take place. And I'm very pleased to say that we, at last, have had some very positive movement and discussion with PennDOT about State Street. You may recall that when we were discussing Kittleson back a few weeks ago, talked about how PennDOT had originally said, "No, we can't do any safety improvements to State Street. It's a state road." They were concerned about the impact on commuter traffic. We've pushed back hard. We've utilized Maverick, and we've seen movement there, and they're now making suggestions, and we are working on designs, and I'll show you a possible design here in a minute. Then there's the East-West Connection, which we just received a $500,000 grant for. That is a multimodal grant, and I'll show you some slides there for the downtown. And then there is the North Second Street Two Way, which has had a lot of conversation. That project is a multi-year project that won't be completed until 2021, but we anticipate being able to send the project out to bid in April and starting to see some construction on that project in 2020. So in 2020, you should see all five of those projects commence and some of them complete. So let's go back to North Seventh Street just for a minute. This image was here last year, but it is really happening now. They're in the final stages of design, and then it will go out to bid. Again, it has improved crosswalks, and those crosswalks that you see going across are now basically being paid for by FIA, which is their contribution, but it's going to be an important pedestrian upgrade for everyone. There is a two-way cycle track which runs along the FIA side, which is a positive thing, and obviously, the traffic circle itself will have a calming effect. This may not complete next year because we're going to try and time the final completions with the courthouse, but it will get underway next year, and some of those changes will be made, including the removal of all that parking, which is in the middle, the middle of the street. Mulder Square was, you know, has come an awful long way in the past year. The new buildings from the Housing Authority are bustling and full of activity. The neighborhood is, I think, ready now for the infrastructure changes, the new traffic circle, the new configuration to tie to the YWCA, and the other traffic calming measures. So that is scheduled for the summer of next year and will be a major positive addition. And now, the State Street Rapid Response. Now, this is only a suggestion, but at least it is, it is something which has come from PennDOT themselves, which is really positive. Again, we wanted to, we wanted to improve safety on State Street. We wanted to connect State Street to the Capitol area, Green Bell, and we wanted to basically give the road a road diet. We had talked about potentially having a parking protected bike lanes on both sides. PennDOT wasn't wild about that idea, but what they have agreed to is the concept of returning something of a boulevard to the street, which would allow us to basically have a bike path, walking path, green space, trees down the center of State Street, basically shortening the crossing distances and allowing for a safety refuge for pedestrians and bikelists down the middle of the street. We are going to need to do some more public outreach on this and refine and develop these ideas, but the good news is that we went from, "No, you can't do anything," to, "We will work with you to try and get you to do something." And I think PennDOT has recognized the importance of this priority project for the city. The East-West Connector is basically Walnut and Chestnut Street improvements downtown. I will draw your attention to, as the press release for the grant, which just came out. But if you look at below that, at the intersection there, if you look at Second and Walnut, you'll see that Second and Walnut is going to be major improvements there at a corner that we all know and appreciate, bumpouts, new crosswalks, pedestrian connections. There's also replacement of sidewalk, the whole thing making it easier and more accessible for pedestrians. And then, there's Chestnut Street, which you've already begun to see the bumpouts on Chestnut Street, but you haven't, you haven't seen the reconfiguration of Chestnut Street. And one of the nice aspects of Chestnut Street is that it's got bike lanes going from Riverfront Park, connecting on both sides of the street up to the train station and back, and then also connecting to the small bike lane that runs against traffic there on Third Street. So that is the East-West Connector, and that is going to dramatically transform the downtown into a safer, more walkable area, and that's also going to be coordinated. Chestnut Street will be coordinated with the Harrisburg University Project, so that also may not be completed in its entirety next year, but you will see the line painting, the bike lanes, and the bumpouts. And then, finally, Second Street Two Way. As you know, we've had, we've had really good public input on that, lots of, lots of excellent commentary, a lot of people very excited. We did adopt a model and a plan for that that does not include a dedicated bike lane, but rather has a series of other measures, median strip like you see in the top image there, pedestrian refuge, and a series of many roundabouts at various intersections. So that is, that is a little preview of what is to come there. Okay, so we also wanted to talk just generally about the capital plan, and this is something that we have worked out with the new ICA members. And as part of the agreement, which is currently being worked out and will be to council soon with the Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, we're looking to produce the capital plan each year with a revised five-year plan for an early deadline of basically April 30th. That's going to sort of accelerate next year's budget schedule so that we're doing capital and long-term planning in the beginning of the year, and then we're doing the rest of the budget later in the year. That will go to council and the ICA in April and could be theoretically adopted over the summer. And that will be something that we'll have to do every year as we move forward under the new agreement, revising our figures and numbers and our capital plan in accordance with our needs and abilities to pay. And then also under Next Steps, you've got some in the audience who are here tonight. We recently supported the application of a group that's been working for a new African-American monument in Harrisburg with the Goffin County Gaming Commission. I think it was important for us to say that we're going to have skin in the game, too, if we're going to ask the county to also step up and help fund this monument, and also for us to let, let other foundations and organizations and community know that we think this is a worthy project. We think it is a, really, a terrific project, a much overdue project for the city, but something that is worthy of funding. So we're proposing in this budget a challenge grant, which is, we'll put up $25,000, but we also, we also have a fair bit that we have to raise from all the various community stakeholders, not just the county and the foundations, but the general public as well. We're going to help draw increased attention to this project as we move forward in the year. It would be a remarkable monument and a source of great pride, I think, for Harrisburg and its residents. That's it, except moving forward, the public should know that currently, we have planned two budget hearings. One is coming up on December 10th, the other on December 12th, and that we're currently anticipating a budget vote on December 14th. I think council will also potentially have hearings and executive sessions. Sorry, did I say that wrong, December 17th? Sorry about that. Council may also have other sessions on other aspects of this, this very busy and filled with important things agenda. But from a budgetary standpoint, if people want to drill down on our departments and hear their reports, they should come back on the 10th and the 12th. Thank you very much, Madam President and members of City Council.